Lisa.
Thank you for being here today. We're starting the regular meeting April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. The meeting was duly posted. Seventy-two hours is posted outside our city as well. And we'll have the indication. Let's save the indication.
Hi, I thank you for this opportunity to be together as a city. As a person, we thank you for the opportunity to serve this city. And we're being asked for wisdom and guidance by everyone.
Amen. Under section state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family, a business organization in which a council member serves an employee, officer, director, trustee, or partner, and/or any other person or organization with whom you're negotiating or have any arrangement concerning the prospective employment has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Ms. Kathy, do we have any public comments?
Comments at this time.
Item number five, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the special meeting of March seventh, two zero, two, three, and the regular meeting of March twenty-first, two zero, two, three. Yeah. We're going to come back to that one. Our council members still reading. She's our editor in chief. Item number six, discussion only with Ricky Leal from First Community Bank.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Council members, Jason, good to see you. And Kathy, it's good to see you in person, finally, now there's email and phone calls. I'm Ricky Leal from First Community Bank.
Hi, Lisa.
How are you? I said council members. I was trying not to. I'm in trouble. I'm sorry. It didn't take long. That didn't take very long. Well, I'm here representing First Community Bank and we've got, you all have banked with us for many years now. I think the contract goes back to two thousand and ten. It was a three-year contract that we signed back then, and it's continued. We've continued to honor the terms of the original agreement. You have eight accounts with us right now. The total of the accounts as of this morning was a little under two point five million dollars. And the mayor came to visit me and asked that I come over to just talk about what the current situation is and what the options might be. We are, in the last year, the interest rate environment has turned on a dime. Five hundred basis points swing in twelve months or less, which is historically fast, historically high. And so right now, your accounts are not earning much. Half of them are just in regular checking accounts earning zero. And then the others, the other four money market accounts are earning fourteen basis points. So what we want to do is address that. We want to address it proactively and give you some options. We have other accounts with other municipalities of similar size and scope. And what we've offered them is the four-week treasury rate. Fifty percent of the four-week treasury rate, which right now for treasury is probably paying four-six, it fluctuates. So what we would offer you across the board, money markets and checking accounts is fifty percent of that rate moving forward. But what we don't want to do is get into a tit-for-tat if you're going to turn around in two months and bid it out to everybody. And so what I'm offering is to make that adjustment. Doesn't need to go to contract. I think that you're probably going to look at that at some point. You have to as a municipality, but that's something that we can offer you overnight. We can go take care of that tomorrow if that's what you want to do. And that way, you're earning something a little bit more reasonable, given the rate environment. We're also, I mean, you're enjoying a lot of the banking services. I mean, obviously, you've got great relationships with the staff, things that you need. But you're also using the ACH origination service for your water bills, and I think that's been well received by your residents. You get a lot of compliments for that, and we're not charging you for that at all. And the bank's also been very honored and privileged to sponsor many of the events that have come down the pipe over and over Christmas. We were a big sponsor for your lighting ceremony, and we're proud to be one of your big sponsors for your Tri-City run that's coming up in a couple of weeks, which I'm going to attempt myself. So that's kind of a summary of your current situation and you know, what we're willing to do. And when the time comes to bid, we're certainly going to bid again. We feel like we've got a great relationship here, and we'll have a lot to offer whatever packages whenever you're ready to look at banking deposit services again. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
We started talking because we lost a book around here, but did you say what was the fifty percent of the four-week treasury rate? What is that?
So that moves around, but last week when I looked at it was four-six, so that you'd be earning two-three. Well, it's it's better than zero, and it's also quite secure. Every single dollar you've got is backed by not only FDIC, but every dollar over two hundred and fifty thousand is backed by mortgage-backed security, which is bank-qualified. And so I think sometimes you're not as interested as the return on the interest as the return of the principal, which you're going to have backed, which quite a few depositors in California and New York wish they had.
If you have words, you say that we have one or some, I didn't know, so you all that that do not earn interest.
Your yes, your operating accounts, which is, that's pretty typical. You had zero.
Do we have any kind of a ceiling on that, that if the operating account or that accounts that don't earn interest, that if the balance goes over a certain amount, that it's automatically a calendar holding pattern that will earn interest?
We have the service. It's called overnight sweeps. We have, you all haven't signed up for that to date. That's something we can talk about. What I'm proposing to you, you would just earn the flat rate on everything, money market and checking as we go through this period. And when it changes, we'll be in touch. Because that's not something I can guarantee you forevermore. But in this rate environment, you know, I think it's appropriate.
And I would also assume that the city of Palm Valley would not have a problem meeting whatever the minimum balance for that kind of
No, your your deposits have ranged over the years from like one point five. I think this is as high as I've ever seen it. The two point five, maybe you may have a project going on. I'm not sure what's happening there. But this is as high as a balance relationship as I've seen since you've come on board. When you first came on board, it was more or less a million dollars. So it's there are no balances right now. We're out of contract anyway, so these are just
My experience with banks is you get that if you have a
Right. No, I mean, I think if we had an issue, we would call and work it out. It wouldn't be something that I just say it's gone overnight. I mean, we would talk about it. We're trying to keep a good relationship here. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming. The reason I called him is since I walked into his office and he goes, oh, I knew this day was coming.
That's the truth.
Yeah. True story. And so we're always happy to see you. We're happy with the bank, and I just wanted him to come in and just talk to you about where we're at and what they can offer going forward. And I really appreciate its candidness.
Sure.
We're discussing our accounts and stuff.
Sure. Just let me know if you decide to pull the trigger on the new rate offer.
Thank you.
Next so much.
All right. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Palm Valley and Community Loan Center of RGV. And we have a representative from Community Loan and RGV.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me this evening. My name is Rose Hadamio, and I work for CDCB. We are a nonprofit organization. We service the entire Rio Grande Valley. And what I'm here to introduce today is the Community Loan Center Program. I left the green folder on your fitting area. So the CLC program, which stands for the Community Loan Center Program, is only one of the resources that we provide through our nonprofit organization. Our nonprofit organization was established since nineteen seventy-four, and our priority is to build homes. But from there, stem all of these other services that we open inside. We not only build the homes, but we also offer the mortgage lending for the homes that we build. We have RGV casitas, rental properties. We also offer down payment assistance, anywhere between twenty-five, forty-five, even up to eighty thousand grand twenties. There are qualifications, but if the family or the individual qualify, these are monies that can directly offer the cost of the home. They don't have to pay it back. We also offer financial literacy counseling services. The financial literacy counseling services are specifically designed to help the individual repair, restore their credit, whether they're looking to buy a house, whether they're looking to buy a car, maybe they just want to be financially stable. We also have a program that addresses the youth in our community. It's called Youth Bill, and that's for students between the ages of sixteen through twenty-four who have dropped out of high school for whatever reason, but are now seeking their GED. We help them attain their GED, and then we also empower them by teaching them a skill upon graduation, so they not only have their GED, but they have a skill extension for them to find employment, and we assist with job placement. And then we have the Community Loan Center Program. The Community Loan Center Program was born out of a necessity to offer the community an alternative to your predatory lenders. Predatory lenders being your payday loans, court title loans, pawn shops. When the families would come to us seeking mortgage lending, of course, we had to check their credit. In doing so, we realized that they had a lot of outstanding debt. That debt was bad debt on shops, payday lenders. In speaking to the community, we asked, why is that so? Their reply is, when you're in need of immediate funds, and you don't have the requirements that your traditional lending institution require, you tend to resort to what is easiest. Your predatory lenders are quick to lend, but they hook the employee into vicious predatory cycle of borrowing, sending, borrowing, extending. Our director said we have to find an alternative, so that's where the Community Loan Center was born. The details of the programs are right in here. Our loans aren't big. They're not designed to put the employee in debt. They're merely designed to offer the employee a resource should they need it. Our loans are between four hundred and a thousand dollars. We offer the employees twelve months to pay back. Everything is originated online. None of your employees will have to come to our office to sign any documentation. They apply online on their computer, and then they have access. The payments are easy through payroll deduction, and then we also provide financial literacy counseling services to them free of charge. Another benefit of our program, the CLC program, is that we do not run a credit history report on any of your employees in order for them to take advantage of the CLC program. We do not ask for collateral. We don't need their court title. And there's no prepayment penalties should they decide to pay off their loan ahead of time. The employee has access to their deposit within twenty-four hours after we receive verification from you, the city, that they are employed with the city, and then payments are paid back through payable deduction over a period of a year. The requirements for approval, they're easy. They must be at least eighteen years of age. We ask that they currently be working with the city at least ninety days, three months, and a bank checking account. That's where we would deposit the funds, and of course, driver's license, social security, and four records. And this is our website. It's www dot RG the Community Loan Center dot com. The employee basically logs on, they click apply, and they submit their application. A little bit of historical data, we're going to find out that at least thirty percent of the employees take advantage of the CLC program. We have peak seasons. Back-to-school is very popular. Parents normally could advantage of the CLC program for uniforms, supplies, books. I can share with you that when COVID hit, and not only we as employees were sent home to continue working from home, but also the students were sent home to continue their education. We heard back from a lot of parents that they took advantage of the CLC program to buy laptops, headphones, because now they have to incorporate remote learning from home. So that's one of the peak seasons, winter, Christmas. Everyone wants to have a nice Christmas, and of course, end of the school year, maybe the kids are going off to college and necessities for the dorm. Average approval time for HR person is one or two minutes. It is a paperless process, but should you need any type of employee form, you can hit them right off your computer, and it's an easy ACH draft and pay. We partner with many businesses throughout the entire RGV. They have all of the cities in the Rio Grande Valley signed up, with the exception of two, and I'm in conversation with those two. We do a lot of school districts, housing authorities, Port of Brownsville, Chambers of Commerce, the Bailey Park, Little Tires. The best thing about our program is that if at any one point, any of your employees were to take advantage of the CLC program, and there's a separation of employment, you as a city are not held responsible for collecting that loan. Your employee signed a contract with us that states that they are responsible for the loan in its entirety, whether they're working with you, or should there be a separation? Any questions?
We actually do have a question.
Okay. I'm so sorry. I forgot what Rose. Yes. Hi, Rose. I'm Lisa. I have a few questions. Okay, so first of all, this program would be for the city employees, not just like the residents of the community. Okay. And what what is the liability or what is it that you would be asking the city to do regarding this program?
Sure. We come to the city for two things, verification of employment, because of course, we don't know who your employees are, and two, the payroll setup. Anything outside of that, we take care of. There's no liability and no cost to you for the program in itself.
Okay, so if our employees decide that they want to do this, they don't need our permission as employer, just verification that they are employed, et cetera.
There is a portal that we set up, and if I'm mistaken, Miss Cherry would receive an email. Everything is done online. So she would receive an email notification, tip or sample on your employee, and I want to take advantage of the CLC program. I initiate the process by starting the application online. Once the application finished entering the information on the application, I hit enter. It'll go to Miss Cherry for her to verify that I am an employee of City of Palm Valley. Once that is verified, and it comes to me as the employee, I would sign my contract. If it's in our office by three o'clock, the employee receives the money in the bank next business day. Once they receive their money in the bank, Miss Cherry would receive a notification that says Rose had a new CLC loan has been funded. And she sets me up for payroll deduction.
Okay, so basically, you're just, you're here to ask us as a city council to notify our employees that this is available.
Yes, for me to be able to inform them that these resources are available to them. Yes.
Okay, and then I have one very important question. And that is on the documentation that you provided us on the sheet or on the documents that are titled Community Loan Center, and then it says employer information form.
Authorization to charge account.
If you turn to the very last page that's titled authorization to charge account. If you go down to the paragraph that starts with the word employer, and then it says employer agrees to pay any fees for overdrafts, which may result from not maintaining sufficient funds to cover the payments and the fees incurred by CLC for the returned draft. That, to me, says that the city would have liability if the employee borrows money and then does not have sufficient funds to make the payments to pay it back.
Well, the money that the city would be drafting from the employee's payroll is going to go into your account, and that would be the money that we would select. Only that. So the money, it's not coming from the city. The money that you are drafting to put into your account is coming from the employee's payroll account. So from my check, from my payroll, so you're pulling twenty-three dollars from my payroll. It's going into that account. CLC will draft those twenty-three dollars.
Okay, so give me an example of how an overdraft would occur that would cause the city to be responsible for fees for that overdraft.
That has happened in the past. We do have a couple of cities that perhaps maybe when we go to do the draft, the money is not there. But the money, and we can't explain why, and that's really nothing that we can turn around and ask the city, why isn't the money that you pulled from my payroll, why isn't it in that account? So that's when that would occur.
It could be that the employee doesn't work there anymore, so there's no pay.
Exactly. And once that employee is terminated, we stop any collections for that specific employee. Miss Cherry would let us know employee ABC is no longer employed. We terminate that employee from the portal, and then we turn around and collect from the employee directly. We don't draft your account for that specific employee.
Okay.
Not necessarily. It's something that Miss Cherry and I would be in contact constantly. Anytime an employee quits, she would let me know, and we terminate exactly that up through their final paycheck, and then that employee, there's no other further deductions for that employee.
So along those lines, I agree with Councilwoman Baker. It's basically a program that could possibly benefit the employees, but it would cause extra work for our lovely and appreciated Miss Cherry. So I guess we need to have a conversation with her as to whether or not she wants to take on that additional.
My arms aren't long enough to hit him, Kathy. Um, I don't think that would be an issue as long as we're in constant communication. So I don't, it doesn't sound tedious or sound like I have five hundred, you know, employees, so I think it should be okay. I think it should be okay.
Okay.
What's a typical interest rate from these predatory lenders and typical interest rate from you guys?
So if you're hoping this all pamphlet that you have in there, there's an example on there. I'll go through it really quickly. It isn't a whole lot. So this would be asked, and this would be a payday lender. And this is an example on a thousand dollars. If an employee were to borrow a thousand dollars, we do charge an administrative fee of twenty dollars. They do not. However, we give the employee twelve months to pay back, whereas they need their money within fourteen to thirty days. Our interest rate is eighteen percent. They will never put down on paper what their interest rate is, even if you ask them. And the reason for it is because their interest rates range anywhere between three hundred and fifties to four hundred percent. They'd rather call it a financial. For this example, if an employee were to borrow a thousand dollars, they say, sure, not a problem. They're going to charge the employee an initial two forty-four, but they need the money back within fourteen days. This is where they coax the employee. Here at this point, these places are shaped to land because they take some type of collateral. Nine times out of ten, it's usually a court title. So as an employee, here I have two options. The fourteen days come about. I don't have the money. I can go back to them and say, I'm sorry, I don't have the money. They'll offer me an additional fifteen days, which is now your thirtieth, but the second go-around, they're going to charge me five hundred and thirty dollars. I'm now owing them seven seventy-five, almost as much as what I borrowed, but worse suffered that I started the predatory cycle of borrowing, extending, borrowing, extending. We've done a study. It does take anywhere between three to four loans before the employee is able to break away from these predatory lenders. To think about it based on those rates, how many times has the initial downed, not been paying still nine? This is what they would pay us, a hundred and twenty, over the thousand, and we give them a year. We don't do loan over loan over loan. That's not how our program works. Our program, basically, if I'm an employee, I want to take advantage of the CLC program today, April of two thousand and twenty-three. I pay it off in April of two thousand and twenty-four. If I'm still employed with the city, at that point, I'm eligible to reapply. The other option that I have is whatever dollar amount it is that I borrow, I bring the balance down to half. At that point, I'm eligible to renew my loan. So we don't do loan over loan. The employees will not be applying this month, applying again next month, and so on. Again, the program is basically designed to offer a resource should the employee need.
How many cities are have taken advantage of?
We have all the cities signed up except you. We have all of the counties, with the exception of Ida Lue, and I'm in conversations with them, but all of the cities are signed up here in Europe, so maybe all of them have the CLC program. We have school districts, Port of Brownsville, Chambers of Commerce, a lot of clinics and hospitals. The best thing about the program, as I said, it's merely a benefit that you allow us to offer your employees should they need it. It doesn't mean that if you say yes, you know, this is something that we want to move forward with, all must apply now. That's not how it works. It's merely there should they need it today. Maybe they want to wait for Christmas for the holidays. Maybe something, an emergency happened, and they need that. It's only a thousand dollars.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Yes, appreciate it. Thank you.
So moving forward. This I forgot the procedure. Any more discussion? Motion to, oh, sorry, motion to approve the, to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Palm Valley and Community Loan Center of the RGV.
I would so moved.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All against? Motion carries to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Community Loan Center of RGV. Thank you, by the way. Item number eight, discussion and possible action to approve request for bids for grant writing services for the City of Palm Valley. Last meeting, we had a grant writer come in. We only had one. The other one didn't show up, but we want to start the bid so we can at least get some companies to come in and see what they can do for us, and we put it out there. Hopefully, we'll get more than just one, and we can move forward. What's that? No, no, we're just, we're just, we're doing a request for bids.
Okay.
Yes. Anyone want to make a motion for discussion and possible action to approve the request for bids for grant writing services?
I will make a motion for possible action to approve our discussion collection to approve the request for bids for grant writers.
All for? All against? Motion carries to approve request for bids for grant writing services for the City of Palm Valley. Kathy, you're going to be busy. Discussion only with Ferris Flynn Medina LLC regarding the update on the five-year plan for the City of Palm Valley. And please do not have a heart attack when you see the numbers.
Oh, Lord. Always a pleasure to see you, Dave.
This is just so you know, this is the overall price. Does it mean everything has to be done right then?
Yeah.
So Mayor and council members. As we as you mentioned, this is about the five-year capital improvement plan that we started in December of two thousand and twenty-two. And giving you an update. So part of that, the proposal was to prepare maps for you all. You all have one map that was done in nineteen seventy on the wall in there. So now you've got a water map. You've got a sewer map, and you've got a drainage map that is electronic. You can finish people, AutoCAD, whatever. Okay, so you've got, you've got that done. We've met with Chendo and gone over that to verify some accuracy based on the different maps we had. We went through and discussed existing conditions of some infrastructure with Chendo and the needs. You know, we're talking about water, wastewater, streets and drainage. We've kind of already hit drainage a whole bunch, but we'll hit on it here again a little bit. And then we updated the water system, just used the system hydraulic model that we did back in two thousand and eleven to mitigate a situation with TCQ. We've updated that. And the reason we did that is to identify the elevated storage tank where that goes. We had an idea where it was going to go. We ran the model now, so. And then we've come up with phased improvements. And um, then we've come up with phased improvements. So. The first map you have there. Is the water map. Okay? And I'm, I'm going in order of what we believe is important. Your water system. Has several problems. Uh, and they all, they all, everybody may have a different opinion about that. You've got a, a water loss problem. Right? You've got a uh, a issue in the summer of diphocation where Chendo has to dump all that water. Which is gonna, is gonna happen again, and that's part of. These improvements will help mitigate that. And then the last one is fire flow. You really don't have any fire flow. Okay, because of what? You buy wholesale water from Harlingen Water Works and they put those back flows back in twenty-ten. And that's, that, that mitigates uh, or, or lessens the pressure yet and the volume you can get. So. Theoretically, you don't have fire flow. It, it would, it would uh. Be less than what you. So. Why am I saying that? So. We, back in twenty-eleven. We presented to the T C Q that they kept saying you have to have some kind of pressure element. Okay?
Okay.
So we put in the booster pump station. Because that was the least expensive way of doing it, but we told them we were going to do an elevated storage tank. Because you have to have something with a big volume of water. Um, and that. Every time we would, we would talk about it. The years since then till now. Y'all haven't had the opportunity, but the other one just kicked the can down the road and said, well, what is the way to get a finance again or send us a letter? So. So if you look at that phase one. The little triangle piece of land you got there on the uh, east side of Dilworth, Boegen via. That's where we put it. So you'd have, you'd have an elevated tank. You'd have a booster pump station to take water from Harlingen Water Works, just kind of what you have down there. At the uh, south. East corner of, of the city. Uh, and, and, and fill the tank and keep it full. And then you'd have all this. Volume of water and pressure and it just, it floats off the system. And we can, we, you, we can adjust that pressure. Obviously, that's a problem right now with the old. Water lines. Um, if, if we go up to. What, ten to fifty pounds? So, you know, um. That, that's what, what the big picture is. We've got to replace all those lines by pipe bursting. But phase one includes. The elevator tank, the boost pump station. You'll have a backflow again and a meter off of Harlingen. And you'll have a twelve-inch line that will connect into Palm Valley Drive. East at Boegen via, and it, it, it connected system. And. You know, the price on that is four and a half million dollars. Yeah.
Is that it?
I mean, is that the same thing that used to cost eight hundred thousand that's now two point five?
Eight hundred thousand in twenty-eleven, yes.
The kick the can has not been a good financial plan.
They don't get a free next customer.
I, I spoke to Chaney Lopez on this and uh, Rolando Villa. And so they're trying right now. Well, you were at that meeting as well. They're trying to help us get some money for all this.
Yeah, and you, we gave you all the costs, kind of all as one thing. And, and you know, we, we've got to find a way to. To pay for it. And, and you know, after we. Finished this little discussion, the next step is to get with the financial advisor and have, have some uh. Workshops and talk about wha- what it look, what that looks like. And, and again. We're, we're, we're presenting. Certain size of bites of the apple, so to speak. We can make them smaller, you know. But. The first one, what, you gotta have the tank. You gotta have the water. Set up properly to, and to, to improve stuff. So that's kind of the big one. Okay, and you'll, as we go along. Um, phase two is, is running the line, the twelve-inch line. Yes, ma'am.
I'm still digesting. Okay, um. So just, just to be clear. What you're presenting here today. And the cost of all these different phases. This is not currently in our. Twenty-year. Plan that we've previous, previously gone over and approved regarding the, regarding the infrastructure and the. The ponds and the sewer and.
Well, so that.
Well, I mean, so that's not.
If you're talking about what uh, George was doing, okay, George. Decided we're going to lump them all into one thing. And that was the twenty million dollar. Twenty-two.
Right, that didn't pass.
It didn't pass. He was just going to do it all at once. Okay? And so this is. That, it just broken up into water and breaking that up into pieces like I. Had mentioned that I had suggested phasing. And he said, no, let's just do it all at once and, and, and vote on it.
Okay, but I'm talking about like, and, and forgive me, I forget exactly what the numbers were, but. Uh, a, a while back, a year or two or so ago, then we had that increase in our water bill of like. Twenty-four dollars to pay for. Okay, for stuff and. And then there was some more stuff that we got some money from the grant. And blah, blah, blah. So I mean, that's not any of this.
Yes, that's different from that.
So this is all in addition to that.
I mean, it's, it's, it's the same problems for the entire process.
Yeah, so, so just, just so uh. You know, so generally speaking, most cities do a capital improvement plan, okay? And then they, they have that document and when they go ask water board for money, they go, you have a capital improvement plan? Yes, we do. Somebody has evaluated it. They've come up with costs. That's what this is. It's just, you got to show up with. Somebody has studied it and come up with the cost. That's, that's where we are.
There enough information. Phases to. Uh, go, go to a bid or is this just sort of?
This is, this is either estimates. We're not, th- these are construction. I mean, we, we, we're using current dollars. We, we bid projects. All the time and we kind of have a feel for what's going on. I mean, the market's gotten. The construction world has gotten a little bit less than it was in twenty-two. Early twenty-two and twenty-one, that was all supply chain problems. Okay? That's gotten a little bit better, but still. When those guys get to raise their prices, they don't just go right back down to what they were. It's just, it, it, world don't work that way. So, um. But anyway, that, that's why we're doing this plan. Okay? And, and again, we're making suggestions. And that's what the workshop's for. When the financial advisor starts telling you, well, hey, man, you got to raise your rates again to this much to, to be able to do this. Go, no, no, we're, we're only going to here. Well, okay, but then we start. Chipping away and we do ten phase. That a six for water.
Like this page one is.
There's the first project, yeah.
So that would be the first thing and in the first five years. And this just is a plan so that we stay on course. Because that's what we've never had. We've talked about it, we panicked, and then we've not done anything. So, but with this, we can try to get grants and.
Mainly loans. I mean, it, you, you gotta remember on, that. It has to be low to, uh. Moderate income to get grants. Generally speaking, that's, that's part of the factor. To get a whole, to get the full, full loan or grant, that's the way you got to be. You, you might qualify for ten percent or something. Um, but. That's just my understanding. There, we're, we're looking at a few things through the Bureau of Reclamation. Maybe we can do some stuff, but there. You get a grant for three hundred thousand. Or. Maybe a million. It depends on where they're putting money in California or Texas to save water. That's all they're about. So you got a water loss problem. We're going to try to fit that. In there and see what happens, but. Anyway.
So the bottom line is, we are not going to be able to get grants to cover. A substantial portion of even phase one. And in order to do it, it, it is going to require an, an increase in.
So drainage thing you mentioned.
I'm sorry?
The drainage, twenty-four dollars? George was wanting to do all these drainage periods af- after the nineteen event and. You know, we, we tried FEMA and it, it was doing all these avenues politically trying, and, and it wasn't just going to happen. They were saying, yeah, well, we're gonna, and here we are, what, um. Four years later and no money has come in. All they did was do these studies. They gave us money to do studies. So they're doing these regional studies. That's all, that's all that came down here.
That's the meeting we had where they discuss all the studies. One of the things though is uh, I think they're trying to change the legislation, the. Uh, the state senator and the rep to. Get rid of the L M I and do the, it's called an S V I, which is Social Vulnerability Index. Which says it doesn't matter how much you make if you're flooded. I mean, it's, you're still.
Well, Water Home created the uh, flood infrastructure fund and that's what's going to do the golf course ditch. Okay, but it's a loan, just loo- no interest, basically, just thirty years here. Um. But um. That twenty-four dollars, okay? He, he figured out through the financial values, if I create a kind of a drainage. District kind of, Jason could speak to that better than me.
Technically not a district.
But, but it's not a district, but anyway, then you can just raise the rates. To the citizens and use that money for drainage only. And that's why I did that. So, and, and then it builds up capital and then you can, you can go get a loan. Because, hey, I was collecting the money already. It's no different with water. I wear it from my water rate, so now I can do it alone because I got this excess. That's what we're talking about. So let's move on to phase two. Are you good with phase one? Get any more questions? So phase two runs a twelve-inch line. Along Boegen via. From Palm Valley Drive East to Palm Valley Drive West. And that's just, yeah, that's like the backbone of your water system to get the water. Distributed around better. And then, and then it also runs an eight-inch across Stewart Place to tie into the dead end over there. And that would help the circulation of water and help Chendo with his nitrification problem. Because he could, he could isolate the air and get rid of it faster so you don't lose so much water.
I don't think Chendo's doing enough, but honestly.
And then after that, you can look at the different. Phases, all that is, is replacing. Water lines. Um, and adding, put new fire hydrants, more valves, um. And y'all are going to do smart meters. I don't know how, how, we've got, we've got them in here. Okay, but I don't know if y'all were going to do that all differently or separately or not. That's, that's an open discussion, obviously.
You've got them in here as which phase?
They're, they're, they're sprinkled into them. Sprinkled. There's a line item for them.
And there's phases throughout the project.
Figure out where all that money was. Losing for. Fifty percent water loss. Maybe then, we don't have, you know, that we can keep our rates the same and still.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know what that number is in, in dollars, the fifty percent loss. We could look at that, but um, you know, if they're saying these companies are, you got, you got two guys buying to. Put in the smart meter. You know, pick one and, and if you got the capital to do it or most of it. Do, do as much as you can and that's going to help you identify where the leaks are because it listens to the water. And then maybe we can ice, get that fixed as just a repair. And then you start saving money, but that, that seems like a pretty logical way to go. And then, and then in the first five years, you can start the process of doing the tank and. And, and you just chip away at it. Like, like I mentioned before. In December, when we were talking about this proposal and all. You know, we're, we're, we're identifying it, we're, we're lumping, we're breaking up the whole. Infrastructure improvements, right? But it doesn't mean it happened in five years. We're just identifying. And, and you guys, over the years, moving forward can decide, hey, we can only do one and two in the first ten years. Okay. That's what it is. But you know what needs to be done. That's, that, that's the purpose of this. Our C I P is says five years, but we're going to say. This and this, a- after the workshops, this is all future, but here's the project. And they can be moved forward or backwards or the last ones or the first one of year six, whatever. Um. So that's the water. And then on the sewer. Waste water collection system. The first thing we need to do is TV the lines. And we got, we got a proposal from uh. Southern Trenchless, and it was around three hundred thousand dollars. And they do the whole system. And after they do that. We can do a study, we, we would evaluate. The video and, and know where it is. And say, okay, here's a bad piece right here. And then we need to, we need to address that first and. Because, because a lot of that sewer can be maybe slip line depending on the condition, but if it's sagging, we got to pull it out. We got to put a new one in. Uh, Chendo knows the areas that are bad. The second item there is. Sewer maintenance, and that's when you have to go clean out. Is that on Palm Valley Drive West? So we. We're, we're putting a number in for that. Um. And y'all are doing manhole rehab. Y'all done twenty, thirteen? Nineteen? Um, and just continue doing that out of the wastewater budget. We're, we're not suggesting going getting a loan. We're just saying this is what you should just continue doing. Okay? And then the last item there is we're, we're going to evaluate it. The, the TVing. You'll pay for the guy to, to TV it, get the information. We'll have factual information to develop phased improvements. And then again, is it ten phases? Is it twelve phases? Is it? Three, uh, that's depending on what, what you can afford to pay for. And then the phase two of wastewater. The, the sewer plant splitter box is the only thing that's really never been rehabbed since I've been helping y'all. And we've talked about it. Since two thousand nine? Kind of, maybe? It's on page two of wastewater collection system.
We had a, we had this uh, put aside some uh, on our budget workshop for that splitter box. That's correct, right, Chendo? Just the piping, yeah, but, but not the actual splitter box, correct?
The structure itself needs to be. Rebuilt or, or a new one built and, and, and once that's built, we demo the old one. There's just, it, it's. Not as simple as that because you got sewer coming on you all the time and you've got to continue that operation. So it's, it's. That's why two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um. And then both lift stations. Need um. Will need new pumps and electrical. You need electrical more than the pump. But the electrical needs to be. So we're saying at some point, you're going to have to do that again. So it's in here. Um. And then on street rehabilitation. Um. It's my opinion that the streets are. Pretty good shape and. Based on, I mean, people don't like the alligator cracks, they call them. But structurally. As long as you stay, continue doing that. Seal in the cracks. It's going to last. I mean, and, and then you, we start having potholes and we address the problem. But it, um, we did something in twenty fourteen. We did a full-on. Uh. Crack seal job. And we, all the bad spots were replaced. You see, based on the different shades of asphalt where, where those were. Um, and they've held up very well. So what we're suggesting is year one, you do it again. Year three, you do every two years. Year three, you do every two years, you just do the crack seal and it's, if you stay on it every two years, it should logically be less. You have to do less work in the first year.
Speaking, speaking of those, I call it spider webbing, but Gilberto and myself and Matt Chendo out. And we're going to start taking little bites of that. Have we begun that?
No, we uh, we had budgeted, we had budgeted twenty five thousand dollars, but there was a the project that we needed to do for the sewer plant because it was, it was just in bad shape and it was, it was causing all kinds of problems. So we fixed that. We're supposed to receive some funds from elsewhere as far as the donation, but that never came through. And so we had to use all the twenty five thousand on there. However, it was more expensive than that. But Chendo managed to talk them down. I don't know, maybe a three, four thousand dollars.
No.
The what?
We're hiring someone.
We we don't have the equipment to do it internally.
Oh, what?
We don't have the equipment to do it internally. We don't have the stuff to do the street repairs within ourselves. I think most cities do that as well. I think Arlington outsources as well to do their their repairs. We can't. They don't have the equipment either. So we'd have to rent the equipment. We'd have to, we'd have to buy the the product. And then we'd have to do the work.
Only point I want to make is every dollar we don't spend is going to cost us five dollars.
I agree with you. Well, and another thing on that is the 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 franchise fee that's coming in from the the trash, that's going back into the road. So every year, we're going to be getting somewhere in the vicinity of maybe twenty eight to thirty two thousand dollars to put back into the roads.
Yes, he mentioned it. Clicked in my brain.
Yes, sir.
Your fault.
Sorry, it caused me angst. So and and then the last part is the drainage, which we talked a lot about and we just redid the project informer information form for the Water Development Board. And we we did it in twenty two. And you know, the way that works is they got, let's say a hundred million dollars. And they they rank the projects and they just go down the list based on how you rank and if once a hundred, a hundred million is gone. We'll get the money. So they send you a deep letter, say, hey, you didn't make the cut, redo it. So that's what we did, same project. So and and that's been discussed many times, even with the financial advisors about how to do that and Water Development Board was the way to go. So we're we're continuing down that road on that.
Is that the one that was due like last August? Well, what was the?
That's for the north. That was for the north. The north train, correct? The one that was due, the one they sent you information on, saying that you had.
On the north train?
Yeah. The water coming in from the north train.
I'm I'm not following. I I I know in August, we we were.
Yeah.
We were going back and forth. And we got, finally got approval. So we're going to bid that that project next month.
Yeah.
So we we got final approval, Water Development Board at the end of March. So. But but the the projects, the projects in the drainage, just go over again, the first one was bypass line from the north.
Bypass line.
To Bugan Via and it picks up all those little lakes and it's in the, it's the line is right on the edge of the golf course. And then that would, that would allow us to drain the the north end of the club, which which drain is terrible. Because it drains into Lake Number Seven. And it it's supposed to be going out west to Stewart Place, which doesn't work because that, when that rain tries to come back in, that's why they have that gate there. So all it does is just fills up. So this was allow us to drain it. Right now, it's dry. And we had talked. Eric, remember we drove around with all those guys? And we ended up there at the end. And we talked about digging out when it was dry. Because and then we could pile it right there on no man's land between two and three. And then on the south side of the desert, I think that this is an opportunity right now. We could, I mean, we could hire anybody. Jason can speak to this for under fifty thousand dollars. We just pick a guy with a skid steer and have him go down there and just get it all out. And and it would be a lot cheaper to do it now when it's dry than wait and until we get to the point where, okay, we're going to do it ourselves because we've got some loan money and it's full water.
I agree.
And then they got an excavator to reach out there or whatever, they gotta let it dry and try to work it, so. That's my suggestion. If you can do, you got, you got some money, I think, in your drainage fund. Something to consider. But that's 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 the main project, in my opinion, the first one we should do. And then we've got papaya circle. Kind of draining papaya circle to Lake Number One into the golf course ditch. And then we had some improvements to Lake Number One on the bank over there where the road's real bad. That the erosion of the bank, which is on the downward side, is what fills fills the silo. I mean, it's just, so we get, pull it out, we need to stop that. That's why the final wall is what we suggest. I think Lake Number Three turned out pretty nice. Took a long time, but we're done. It's Lake Number Seven.
It's it's mode right now.
Yeah, you can go over and hit your ball in there. I guess it, I don't, I don't play comfortably too much.
It is, it's completely dry and uh, well, I would not suggest anybody go and step out there because God knows what you're stepping into. But my question is this, I mean, I know where the, I know where that pond is. And there is no access to that pond other than taking your excavating equipment and driving straight across the golf course. So we would have to get permission from the golf course to take.
And storage of or put in.
Riding around with that day was a bunch of golfers, right? And and they were like, yeah, you know, yeah, clean it out. I mean, it's. That's Scott Bennett's. Well, that would be the way to access, but if you use a skid steer. You're not damaging. It's a thing weighs nine thousand pounds. It's not like a big X meteore with a big track. A little bit thing, you know, just go there and get down in there and do its deal and.
You have the right to go in there cross over what we need to and do that.
For the easement.
But you certainly have the right to ingress, egress across it to to do this.
But we also have the responsibility that if we tear up the golf course.
Part of the deal. So that's why I suggested the skid steer. Because it's the least, and it'd be on tracks, rubber tracks. They just go right across there, do his business. All that off immediately or not? The haul off is where the damage would happen. Because the hauling the dirt from the golf course out is where the damage will happen. And and so that's why I'm saying leave it there. And then when you have loan money and you have money to mitigate the damage to the golf course, it's in, it's in the budgets.
It's plus nine that would look nice.
This depends on the route of what in the future, right?
It could have to happen eventually. Yes, sir.
No, but I mean, the route of of the piping, right, that's going to take that water.
So we're putting it as where the route of piping. Yeah, and so we do project one. When we do project one, they're hauling dirt off anyway. As they're excavating, they just take, we we have that in the, okay, this pile of dirt is two thousand yards, we need it hauled off. He won't need that much dirt. Anyway, that's that, that's pretty much where we are. We'll send a letter with all this and and suggest a workshop. We'll we'll share it with the financial advisor. I get, I'm assuming using the same ones.
As far as we know right now, that's the only one we have, so it would be the same one.
And we'll share it with them and then they can start having a conversation and when, when can we have a workshop and start talking about, they can do their due diligence and figure how to give you an idea of where 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 we need to go and cost of rates and those kind of things.
Thanks, David.
Okay, thank you all.
Always a pleasure.
You and the IT guy really like.
Yeah, always a pleasure. We'll keep your plans in the car. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten, discussion impossible action to approve a variance request for offensive fifty six ten Ben Hogan Circle. Somebody wants, the a resident wants to build a fence that's going to be right up against Palm Valley West, right in front of the the clubhouse.
That's you. Okay, I was gonna say.
Um, it's basically because our backyard faces Camino Real. So that's our, technically our backyard. Yeah, so at the entrance, I could build a fence there, but it's not going to look really nice. So and our front yard is actually on Ben Hogan. So we can't build a fence on our front yard.
You're on that corner.
Yes. Right, so. Yeah, so I talked to the building inspector and he's like, well, you can build a fence on your backyard, which is on right here on El Camino Real. That's no problem. You can get a permit. You'll be approved pretty quickly. Right, so. Right, so he's like, but I cannot approve you for which is on the Ben Hogan side, which would be, the fence would kind of go around. I kind of highlighted it, so like would go around. Six feet. There's a lot of other houses that have it in that little, in all the haciendas where they have fences in their front yards. They got that's a wooden fence. Like privacy, we want to, we want to just kind of put a fence, you know, just to come in and out and uh, sometimes my wife is out there doing stuff, so we want to be able to, you know. And I mean, we could do our backyard, which is, you know, El Camino Real. But that, you know, we could put a a little fence that goes through our, because that would kind of sort of, this street is our alleyway, I guess you can say. Right. Right. So that is kind of sort of our alleyway.
Okay, but. Okay, but so the variance you're asking for is to be able to build a six foot wooden privacy fence that literally faces
Ben Hogan.
Front Ben Hogan, which is a, you know, a main street. I mean, not as main as El Camino Real, but it's a main street, like, you know.
The, yeah, the little cul-de-sac. It's like a little cul-de-sac, yeah. But we don't, I mean, we could built it on facing El Camino Real. Yeah, well, the well, the Luis, the building inspector said that if that's.
Luis is not always accurate and, yeah.
So here's, so here's the house right here, right? It's El Camino Real. So he wants to build a fence halfway from El Camino Real and Ben Hogan all along Palm Valley West and then all the way in the front and then all the way.
El Camino? No, our front door or our address or mailbox, it's on Ben Hogan. Yeah, so.
So your front doors on the side of the home?
Right.
How are you going to enter your property?
Um, it's, you can enter still. We would have like a, like a sliding door. Yeah.
Well, have have, I mean, um, that just seems so aggressive. I mean, had you thought about doing something closer to your house and not taking up the entire yard? So the, because that fence looks like it's on right on the edge of.
We can, we can compromise and maybe move it further back.
Is is your driveway going to, would you run into the proposed addition?
Uh, no, that addition, that's a whole separate, he approved that. So the addition of the house on the front. Yeah, but as far as.
No, but I mean, where's the driveway? Is that off of Ben Hogan?
Yes.
And you're going to have a rolling six foot?
Right.
Fence that goes all the way to Ben Hogan.
Well, it's going to slide over that way. Towards the country club.
No, I understand, but I'm just trying to, your drawings.
Yeah.
So the driveway is, is, the proposed addition hasn't been done?
No.
So the driveway, does it does it butt up, it comes off of Ben Hogan, does it butt up to the existing residence or the proposed addition?
Uh, it doesn't butt up. I mean, I could, I don't know if you can use Google Maps.
Jose's going to put it up there.
Just show me. Driveway.
Yeah, so the fence would would run basically like this. This is would be in the front.
Where are you saying the front is?
Here. So this is our backyard right here. Here and then go down here and up here. Up there and then there would be a sliding. That's, that's my part of it. And which would be a sliding.
Okay, but I'm sorry, you're, Mr. Aguilar? Okay, Mr. Aguilar, you are basically requesting, I'm sorry, I need to stand.
You're basically requesting permission to build a a a, not just the whole thing, but you're part of it is to build a six foot wooden privacy fence along Palm Valley Drive West. And continuing on Ben Hogan. And then continuing
To the
all the way up here. So when people are driving.
That's the.
Yeah.
So when people are, are, they they come into the country club and if they turn right to go south, there is the wooden fence.
It's not going to comply because it's going to obstruct the vision of of the road. The road wouldn't be compliant with the requirements. Anyway.
Now, not to the edge, for sure. Now, not to the edge, for sure.
Or get it back five feet.
Or a clear eight feet, three feet, something.
Or maybe three feet.
Man, okay, so do you have, I mean, why does it need to be six feet too?
I just, you know, I could find a second sense, yeah.
You said there's other neighbors that have these type of things, show me where the other neighbors are.
On, uh What are the street names? Uh, Byron Nelson or? But, but they're, yeah, like, uh, yeah, they will. Oh, no, that's, uh
Yeah, when you get here, I mean
But for example, this wooden fence, that's there in front of the house.
Yeah, but see, that's a little short. And see here, yeah, it's on six foot and it's not yeah.
And then one of our neighbors had, oh, but if you, I don't know if you, I go, yeah, like there's some bench over here, like the, um
There's a baseball, Palm Valley Drive. Mr. Aguilar, when did you, when did you buy your, your?
About seven, eight years ago or so. This
Okay, and
What, what's the purpose of your fence?
Just security? No, just privacy, right, yeah. Like that. I think that was That's their backyard.
So this right here is Palm Valley Drive.
Yeah.
And this fence is Palm Valley Drive, went west, yes, and what street is this? But see how far that one is in?
Well, we can maybe with that more, but like, that, that says back.
Yeah, but you bump into a corner and, and that's, you know, a visual cross line.
But your, your variance, you want the fence to be on, um, so there'd be no grass. No, but I'm talking about what you're requesting, yeah.
I think we should table this until we get a better description on what.
So that's, I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, there's no way you can build it broadly, but I wonder if you come up with another plan or some other I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to really investigate all those people and how far they are and all that.
And if they have permits, if they actually have permits, because we have a problem with people building stuff without permits, and like when
Connected residents that are adjacent, move the notes, so they can be here and say yes or no on their
Yeah.
And, yeah, because like This fence, I believe, is a six foot fence, maybe this, I, I I can tell, and like, it's, let's say, you know, I decided to build one in my backyard.
Well, I mean, we
That leads to the real site.
But what, what we're saying is, we're, we're not sure even about that one, we would have to research and see if it's compliant. Uh, and, you know, we are, we are a an upscale country club community and aesthetics
Yeah, I'm a member too.
Is extremely important to us, you know, and so I personally, um, I, I, I think that there are, there are other uh, ways to deal with if you needed some kind of a, a fence, because you had little dogs or whatever, and and you, and, you know, I just
I was gonna have you go back to the address of the one that the fence was made.
Well, it should
Not that one, not, not, the other one that's down the street.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, no, no, I'm saying, I'm
Palm Valley Drive West.
Yeah, that one.
Well, you just passed it there, yeah, that one, well, there. Wait.
Who will give you?
Fifty six. I think it's fifty six Byron.
Five, six, six, three, Byron.
Fifty six, ten, uh, Byron.
That's a nice car.
We're focusing on fences, Gil, not cars.
I think we should, uh, table this action to, to we get to talk to the neighbors, I noted that, table the mode, uh, table this, so.
Second.
Sorry, this, and get some information.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
And, so come on the next meeting, see if
Motion to table, motion to table the motion on the various western fence at fifty six Ben Hogan Circle.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you for coming, we're not saying no, we're saying let's see.
No, no problem, yeah, so like, uh, so I would find out if you guys are like investigating the neighbors. Okay, cool, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, item number eleven, it's a discussion only and a resolution on artificial drainage systems legislation by Rolando Vela from the Cameron County Drainage District. I thought this was in an action as well.
Uh, we can do it for the next action, I wasn't told.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Rolando Vela from the Drainage System, I guess, wanted us to talk about, uh, some bills that were going across, uh, La Montilla and, uh, Jamie Lopez's desk for artificial drainage systems throughout the valley. And he wanted us to be part of that, and most of the cities are approving this, so we're gonna go ahead and just table it, because I think it needs an action. So is there a motion to table item number eleven?
We, it's discussion only, no?
Yeah. It's discussion only, yeah, if you wanna, we can No, okay, all right, we just discussed it.
We discussed.
We discussed it, huh? No, he's not. Uh, this is, well, I, I think there's a, uh, the, yeah, it's just a nothing major, he just wants us, he wants to go to, uh, Austin and say, these are all the cities that are on board with this, yeah. Uh, item number twelve. And I know he's been waiting patiently, presentation accepted a city audit for fiscal year ending September twenty twenty two. Sorry.
As you waited patiently.
Yes, you did.
Well, I, I, I'm hoping that you have in your board packet, the reports that we dropped off, we, we dropped off the audit difference statements and, and our recommendation letter. Uh, my name's Quentin Anderson, this is Samantha Atkinson, who's one of our audit managers who work with your personnel, we work with, with Ms. Cherry and your accounting department to, uh, prepare this annual financial statement, uh, and, and I'm gonna give you some brief highlights, and so I, I guess, you know, the first thing I'd say is that, you know, David solved your problem about negotiating, uh, with, with, uh, First Community Bank on interest rates, because you don't have any cash after you do what David asked you to do, right? So, a lot, a lot of, a lot of funds to be spent in those plans, so, uh, in any event that's a that's a bold, a bold five year plan, let's take a look into the, into the page numbered, page one, which is two or three pages in, okay, called report, independent auditors report, and, and so you engage us to audit your financial statements and, and to render opinion as to the fair presentation of your financial statements, and we worked with, uh, Ms. Cherry and, and your accounting department uh, uh, to make adjustments that were needed to the statements, and, and after doing so, in our opinion, those financial statements are fairly presented, and, and so that's what you would, uh, be expecting, uh, to hear about your financial reports, uh, there's a lot of other information uh, in the independent auditors report, but the essence is that the financial statements are fairly presented. Uh, if you flip to page five, uh, we'll also talk about, and of course, with government auditing standards that we have looked at controls over financial reporting and compliance, and issued a separate report uh, in the back of the statements that, that deals, uh, with those matters, and I'll share that with you as well, so to get you, I'm gonna just do some financial highlights for you, uh, since this is the end, end of the fiscal period uh, of September thirtieth, uh, let's look at page ten and eleven, part of management's discussion analysis, you've got a recap of, uh, this is comparative, I'll use this because it's comparative, it shows twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one and it shows, uh, uh, the, the city as a whole, governmental activities and business type activities, when I talk about governmental activities, those are things uh, that the general government does that are funded by revenue sources like property taxes or sales tax revenue or franchise fees. Uh, and then you also have business type activities, uh, which are funded by user charges, your water and sewer services, right, you charge customers and they pay the bill, and a business type activity designed to uh, generate enough revenue to fund the operations of the activity like anybody's business would and build appropriate surplus, so so you've got governmental activities and business type activities, and then the, the combination of the two, if you look in summary uh, total assets of, of, of the, of the city, uh, for governmental activities, they stay fairly comparable, two point three million dollars uh, both years, and bulk of, of your, of your assets, of course, are, are, are capital assets, and and in current assets, you have, uh, some, some cash and cash equivalents, so um, if you look at, at, you don't have a lot of, of long-term liabilities in, in your governmental activities. You do have some debt in the wa, in the water and sewer system, and I'll, I'll go over that in, in a moment, but the difference between your assets and your liabilities is is net assets, right, and, and so you've got a healthy, uh, financial position with assets at, at two point three million dollars and net assets at at two point two in your governmental activities, and you've got assets of five point two million and, in, uh, the, the water and sewer service, uh, and, and liabilities of one and a half million and, and a differential of about three point eight million dollars, so uh, we're gonna look quick at, at, uh, at, at the liabilities in the water and sewer fund, because you haven't typically had uh, long-term, long-term debt, so if you'll, if you'll turn with me to, uh, page forty five, let's jump back into some comparative financial statements for the water and sewer fund. And, and you'll see, um
We don't have a page forty five.
So you're not you should be
We don't have a page that, that is all those
Oh, you're looking, you're
Those income figures, you're talking about two point, uh, million, and then we don't have any of that.
You're, uh, you're looking at our regard communications, we're, a recommendation, but, uh, a couple, couple weeks ago, we, we dropped off these reports.
They were in the last, which, uh Yeah, on the last meeting. On the last meeting.
Yeah, sure, I had a disadvantage, I apologize for that, um, may, maybe, uh Sorry about that.
Thank you, yeah.
But made you want
Okay.
I think you're doing enough.
Right, sorry about that.
Hey, Quinn, let's get, let, let, let's get to the, the end of the mystery, did you get an unqualified opinion?
You did, let's go back to page one, uh, uh, yeah, the most important part, add the report, right after the report tab, you'll see the independent auditors report. And so that's what I was talking about, it's love, it's numbered page one, uh, and, and it, that's the unmodified report, the unqualified opinion on your financial statements, uh, and so, uh, that's what you would be looking for, so that, now you go to page ten and page eleven. Uh, which is the financial information very summarized, okay? Right, you can see, uh, your, your assets in the governmental activities, about two point three million dollars uh, and, and net position of, of, of a similar balance, and your
Thank you, yes.
Your business type activities, five point two million dollars in total assets, uh, one and a half million dollars in, in liabilities and three point eight million and in, uh, net position, I wanted to take you to page forty five and show, show you, you what makes up the liabilities there in the water fund. Because you haven't historically had, had long-term debt, but if you look at page forty five, uh, you see your total assets of five million two hundred ninety five thousand dollars. Um you have, uh, a large balance of, of cash and cash equivalent that are restricted, one point seven million dollars, um a bulk of that's about one point three million dollars sitting in escrow, uh, from the, from the loan that you, that you were the conduit for for the, for the, the Drainage District, right?
Right.
So, uh, the Drainage District is paying you the money to make the debt service on that, so it, it looks like you have uh, this, this long-term, long-term debt, a million, two fifty seven, uh, and you haven't historically had that, but, but there's, there they're sending you the forty five thousand dollars a year that takes, it takes to make that debt payment, so then, and so the distortion is, you, you've got, you know, liabilities of, of nearly one point four million dollars, one point three, which is this conduit debt, and you have, you know, a large balance in, in assets, including one point three million dollars in restricted cash, right, which, which is totally going to be used for that project, as the Drainage District does, if they'll draw on that money for you, from you and so you can't consider that your money, and, and it's not, it's in an escrow fund, I think at, at, uh, Mellon Bank, being White Mellon. Uh, and so it's not even funds that you have at First Community Bank that you might negotiate an interest rate on, okay?
So, Quentin, as, um, as the payments come due and the payment is basically made from the funds that were, that were entrusted to us uh, do you then, is, is the entry, you basically, uh, uh, go to revenue and then and then, uh, expense it to, to, to bring down the, the cash part of the, of the balance sheet and, uh, and the, the bring down the debt and then credit revenue, is that?
Right, so you, you're using your CPA certificate to, to explain exactly how, how that happens, and so, let's look at page, uh, page thirty nine, okay?
Hey, you don't wanna waste that good UT education.
All right. Uh, don't tell her anything, Mr. Wade. Right, so, uh, okay, so that, this is a footnote on page thirty nine about that debt, and so the, the payment's forty five thousand dollars a year and, 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 and so exactly what, what happened, uh, keep your hands on that page and go to page eleven, okay? And see operating grants and contributions, uh, there's, there's, uh, in, in, uh, there's, there's ninety nine thousand dollars. There's ninety nine thousand dollars in operating grants and con, contributions in the governmental activities, and fifty four thousand of that is the TIDAM money that you received that you spent during the year, but forty five thousand of that is the money coming from the, from the, the Drainage District uh, transferred to you, uh, which you transferred over into the water fund, if you, if you see down uh, midway down the forty five thousand dollar transfer to, and the water fund used that money to make that payment, so there, so there was a, a, a debit to cash and credit to revenue, and then there was a, a, a debit to principal balance of a note and a credit to cash to make it go out, didn't, didn't cost you anything other than some journal entries to, to affect it, and so uh, now, also, don't wanna confuse, uh, the concept of this money in, in, back to that one point seven million on page forty five, right? Uh, some of that money is, uh, Councilwoman Taylor talked about this fee that you've been collecting on the water bill, some of that's that money. About three hundred thousand sitting over there, and then the other, the other million three is the escrow funds, right, and that money uh, you won't spend that money, the Drainage District's gonna do the project, and you're gonna reimburse them every time they submit a, a, a payment request, and so so, and, and it's my understanding, if I understand it right, you know, they're doing all the bidding, all the procurement, they're responsible for all the compliance in those projects, right?
No, no.
No?
We, we get to choose whether to do it or not.
Okay, so, but, but at the end of the fiscal period, you hadn't done anything yet, you hadn't made any expenditures within, within those. So yeah, well, they're gonna do the work and, and you're gonna, and they'll submit reimbursement requests and you'll
We're not giving them any back.
Huh?
Well, my point is, it's not like Chendo's crew's gonna be out there during that.
Right, so, so, uh, in, in event that, there's dibs on that money, right, and that's why you have it as restricted, and it's also not even in your own bank accounts and escrow fund, uh, so, important to note, to note that, so, um I wanna take a look at, at, uh, at the general fund revenues comparatively on page forty four, so uh, the general government, like I said before, with primary sources of revenues or property taxes sales tax revenue, sales tax has come back, and we started to have more activity at the country club, uh, more revenues coming in that regard. Uh, then franchise fees, uh, that come in, uh, from organizations, those are your three primary sources. Uh, then franchise fees uh, that come in uh, from organizations. Those are your three primary sources of revenue. Along with that intergovernmental revenue. Again, the ninety-nine thousand is uh, is some, is TIDAM funds that, that you're using. Uh, and the forty-five thousand dollar that came in from the, from the drainage district. And so, jump back to page forty-three. Uh, the balance sheet of, of your general fund, uh, you know, which is, is the um, part of the, part of the primary government. You see. Uh, uh, you have seven hundred eighty thousand dollars in cash, that's grown a little bit because of operations, but look at the unearned revenue. Uh, there's a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one and ninety-nine thousand in twenty twenty-two. I only talk about this because it's unique, you don't, you don't get this all the time. But in twenty twenty-one, you, you received a hundred fifty-three thousand dollars from TIDAM. Uh, you know, part, part of this uh. COVID relief, COVID relief funds, right? And so you hadn't expended any of that in twenty twenty-one. You expended about fifty-four thousand in twenty twenty-two, you had ninety-nine thousand left over. Uh, after uh, after the year, you got another uh, hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, right? And, and uh, because it was given in two, two installments. And so that's not reflected here yet because it, it didn't come in until October. So, and then you spent some of that, I think when I read your minutes, you, you did some premium pay to employees, a little bit of that. Uh, and so some of that is spent uh, between October and December. That's not reflected here either, but, but uh. The ninety-nine thousand dollars unearned revenue at, at the end of the fiscal period was the unspent portion of the first tranche of the TIDAM funds. The second tranche came in after year-end, so. So back to page forty-four, you know, the, the, the general fund, it had revenues of one point one million dollars and. Nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in, in expenses. Transferred out that forty-five thousand dollars to make the debt payment. And your fund balance has grown to five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, so. Which, which, you know, I'd consider healthy for an entity your size, right? In terms of number of months. Uh, page uh. Let's go to page forty-six and see the operations of the water and sewer fund. This is the last schedule I'm gonna, gonna focus on. Um. You've got operating revenues similar to prior year, nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, the prior year about nine sixty. And, and so you got, you have water service and wastewater service. Uh, there's fire protection fee, which essentially goes right back out to the. To the, to, in your contract for, with the city for fire protection services. Um, and then you've got operating expenses of, of uh, uh, seven hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. Um. You've got non-operating revenues. Uh, when you talk about negotiating interest rates, you had maybe about eight hundred thousand dollars in. In cash in the general fund, another eight hundred thousand dollars in the water sewer fund. And you made twelve hundred dollars of interest revenue, right? So not, not a, not a whole lot. And sort of, in years past, that's been a number worth talking about. And maybe in, in, in the near future, it's gonna be a number worth talking about. But interest income hasn't provided you with. With a whole lot of revenue uh, in, in the, in the past few years. And, and you're not, it's not, not unique to. Not that you failed to negotiate anything great because nothing great was available, right? And hopefully that's, that's gonna happen, that's gonna, gonna, gonna come out, so. Um. That's the overview of the financial position of the city. In the compliance section of the report, which is back on page forty-nine, I talked about, we issued a report on. In accordance with government auditing standards that dealt with controls over financial reporting and compliance. So, you know, during our audit work, we, we didn't identify any matters of non-compliance. Uh, that, that we thought were, were significant non-compliance and our report reflects that. And we did not, didn't identify matters that we, that we had classified as material weaknesses and controls. And that'd be important too for you. Uh, you heard Councilman Taylor asked, did we have an unmodified report? Well, you did on the financial statements. And, and then, and then you, we didn't have compliance matters to report either, so. That would be important to you as well. Page fifty-one shows that. On the report on compliance in the first paragraph, uh, the. Last sentence of the first paragraph says, the results of our test disclosed uh, uh, you know, one matter. Uh, that we wanna report, but it wasn't, you know, it wasn't a significant matter. Uh, and, and that had to deal with your budget process on page fifty-five. Uh, on page fifty-five, you know, you, you guys approve a budget annually. And, and so what, what uh. The budget is, should represent, you know, is, is, you know, council's authorization for expenditures, right? And so there's a couple of instances on page forty-one, if you jump back there. Uh, where you're, you're, you're over budget in a couple of categories. Uh, and, and what you need to do. Is, is recognize during the year, there's a point in time where you might need to amend your budget. Recognizing that you're gonna be spending more than you had originally authorized. And, and uh. I'm not implying that you don't know you spent the money, you just didn't match it up with, with how you had, had budgeted the money, the money. So. Anyway, that, that wasn't any type of material non-compliance. Uh, but it's a matter that, that we made a recommendation on, so.
Well, we actually, what we, what we budgeted and anticipated income. Was less than our actual income, so that actually was good.
Right, so you had more money come in than you anticipated and, and uh, and you spent a little bit more than you anticipated.
Right, but, but, but the income was significantly, the, the additional income that we didn't anticipate was significantly higher. Than the, the extra expenses that, that we paid, that we hadn't budgeted for.
That's right. And, and to the positive tune of about a hundred nineteen thousand dollars, if you look at that. So, so I'm not saying. I'm not saying it's bad, I'm saying the budget is a control process and you guys are the authority in the budget. And then, and there's a point in time where you would, you would amend the budget. There's a couple of categories where you're over, not, not real significant. Now, and looking at the extra revenues, uh, the things that you got that you didn't budget was that intergovernmental revenue. So you got the TIDAM money you hadn't planned for. And you got the forty-five thousand dollars from, from the drainage district. That's put in a category that, that you didn't, didn't mentally budget for, right? Doesn't mean you didn't know you weren't, you were gonna get it. Obviously you did. Uh, and, and you knew you were gonna, gonna spend it, so. But, so we met, we, we uh, made a comment about that matter in, in our, in our report. As, as, you know, not, not material non-compliance, but a matter for you to, to be aware of. So as you go out, go through the year, you're looking at your monthly financial reports and compare that to your budget and, and, and. Um, you're always aware, it always sounds to me when I listen to you, to your meetings, that you're aware that you're spending money, right? And you're approving that you're spending money. And then conceptually, you have to connect that with, we might need to amend the budget for that process. Yeah, yeah. So uh, that's, that's the only, only matter that we had in the report. So I, I think the financials are, reflect, you know, a good financial condition and. And uh, it was hard work because Ms. Cherry walked in after the fact, right? So uh, you know, she went on board till December, right? Yeah, after the fiscal year. And so uh, uh, we worked with her to, to uh. And with her personnel to, to get this put together and.
Uh, Jindo, just because we had a net operating income from the water department. Don't get any crazy ideas.
We need to get more on that water income with this lots, lots of water.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, that's our report.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for waiting.
So do we have a? Is there a motion to uh, approve the city's audit for fiscal year ending September twenty twenty-two? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to approve the city's audit for fiscal year ending September twenty twenty-two.
Next, next to words.
Uh, item number thirteen. I, I, we're moving, I'm trying to get it out of here. Long meeting.
Yeah.
Number thirteen, discussion possible action to approve the removed easement on thirteen oh nine East Palm Valley, Jordan.
Okay, if y'all know where people used to live and live, but this thirteen oh nine Palm Valley is the Zankas' old house. And then uh, the Brumleys are, who's the cute little couple that live there now? Yes, you do. The little Asian girl.
Oh, Dr. Mona?
Dr. Mona. So when the Brumley, it started back when the Brumleys built that house. Um, they, the way they wanted to arrange the house, and I called. I called um, Mr. Brumley. And he said what they did is the, you know how we have all these little golf cart accesses? That the original one was on the south side of the house. Um, but because the way they wanted to do their pool and all that, they said, can we. Switch it to the north side. And so they, there was actually a. Uh, golf course easement deed where the Brumley deeded the easement on the north side. But what never happened is, even though everybody recognized it. Is they had abandoned the easement on the south side. And, but it was never, that part of the transaction never happened. And until the person who bought thirteen oh nine is there. And, and it, and he doesn't want that ever to come back on him. Because part of, and I don't know whether it was the Zankas or someone before them, but it was. After everybody, all the neighbors decided that was abandoned, built permanent structures. So he doesn't wanna be responsible for though tearing that down or whatever. So. So he wanted that, um, his name was Mr. Sewell. Wanted that recognized as abandoned by the city upon.
I know exactly what you're talking about now, and I know this is a. Okay, so basically, right on the north. Of Steve and Dr. Mona's house is like a brick. Half guard, uh, golf cart pathway to go beside their house to get onto the, to the golf course. Do we have a proper legal easement for that?
Yes, we do, right here.
Okay, so if we do have that proper easement. And they can't put Lily out there and guarding it, that's our people. Um. Then we can abandon the other easement because nobody's using it anymore. Okay.
But it's, it was not abandoned officially.
It was moved, you approved the movement, but you didn't prove. Forgot to approve to get rid of the.
Yes. Did you look at all papers, Jason?
Yeah, obviously what needs to happen for the purposes of the residences is that. For that legal description, these are all. To access the golf courses.
Right, so there's a path on the north side and the south side, but the south side's blocked now?
Yeah. They just want it, well, it was according to the neighbors, you know, everybody. Knew that it was abandoned, but it was never recorded. So Mr. Sewell was very thorough. Noticed that. And he's like, that needs to be addressed. I don't want that being a problem of mine in the future.
And that's the new owner.
Yeah, just recently bought it from, on, on the, I forget his last name, yeah, very recent.
He's been, doesn't exist anymore. The one that he wants abandoned, it's been built on, no one's gonna use it, use the other one. And so, but legally, in deed records. Picked it up on surveys. But it's been, it's been. We have authority.
I move that the um, uh, the south side easement. Uh, on thirteen. Thirteen oh nine East Palm Valley Drive be officially uh, removed as an easement. Uh, of the city of Palm Valley.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
You'll do it later. Okay, okay. I second it.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries to approve the roof, to approve and remove the easement at thirteen oh nine East Palm Valley Drive. Item number fourteen, discussion and possible action to take action on two eighteen Palm Valley Drive West regarding an unpermitted. Unpermitted, unpermitted fixture, permitted or unpermitted, unpermitted fixture.
That are on the agenda that we have nothing to package for.
The two eighteen, the, somebody brought this up. Was it, was it, it was Jerry.
What is that, Jerry?
Oh, they, they, they built an addition onto the house. Joyce has got it listed right, right now. And uh, it's on the backside. It's like, it looks like a pergola, except that it's actually connected to the house. And there was no permit issued for that. And uh, and they built on, they built on in a weekend. You know, all the, all the stuff that occurred during the weekend and everything else and stuff. And then it also infringes upon the twenty-five foot setback as well, too. So it's in both, in both of them, and Luis Ramos. And, and, and he verified that it was, you know, infringing upon that, that twenty-five foot setback. But the guy, and. He's never done it. You know, yeah, he got notified. No, they were, they were moving to begin with, but he didn't, he didn't figure he needed a permit to build it. He didn't. Needed, need to deal with the city hall before, before he left either.
So who, so did somebody buy it and? So we need to, we need to do something before somebody buys it and thinks that it's okay that, that.
Well, that's what he's thinking.
Well, can you put a lane on it and that has to be cured at?
That's what we need to notice, we need to find the penalties that we can, request that it be removed if not, and then to see if the city can. Can pay to have it removed. And then, yeah, we file. Against the property that would be satisfied when the property sells, or we can.
Cause the buyer's not gonna wanna inherit that either.
Right, so we just need to have the city, uh, I said, the city council probably authorize the. City staff to initiate that procedure that I described.
Is it the police that does that, or is it the?
It's the enforcement officer, which could be the police, could be uh, the building inspector, I think. I have to look at that. Part of the statute to see who can send it. I, I think that if the city secretary typically can even send that, then it's filed. Remove it within X number of days, or else you start getting the five hundred dollar, whatever the fine is under our limits for this particular violation.
Jason, if the dude has already moved, then where do we send the notice of the violation?
Well, it still belongs to him, though.
Yeah, it hadn't been that long.
We could also notify the agents.
Uh, Jerry.
I think Jerry.
Well, I, I saw it, I saw it built on a weekend, you know, and I just thought, I, I, I asked. Is there a permit pulled on this? And then when the inspector went by, then on top of that, I thought it was kinda close to the golf course.
They answered then, there's an alert, Councilman.
Superman, Jared. Okay, so we need a motion.
So we, uh, so we need to take action to remove, to remove the, the. The unpermitted fixture on two eighteen Palm Valley Drive West.
Well, we have to.
Uh, Jason, he wanted that.
I think that it's a motion to have city staff take action. To cause removal of an unpermitted structure located on two eighteen Palm Valley Drive West. And then we can go in, do that on an administrative level, go through the steps to notice the property having any sort of.
I think since you found it, Jerry, I think you should have the honor of.
Okay, a motion. And I'll let Jason. My, my motion.
I would second.
All approved, all in favors. All opposed? Motion carries to have the city staff cause a removal of an unpermitted structure at two eighteen Palm Valley Drive West. Alright, uh, item number fifteen is executive session. The next four items are exec- executive session. So. I moved to go into executive session at seven fifty.
I moved to go into executive session.
Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Going into executive session, seven fifty-five.
Uh, you have to start with uh, number five.
We didn't uh. minutes. I don't know if I discussion action to approve the minutes of the special meeting in March seven twenty twenty-three and the regular meeting of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, um regarding the special meeting of March seventh, twenty twenty-three um on page two um under number six. Discussion and possible action of the employment status of the interim police chief and interim sergeant. Technically and this has nothing, nothing personal to do with you, Chief. Um technically, what we put on the record was that Councilwoman Baker made a motion to appoint uh at the time Sergeant Kinkania as the interim police chief. And I seconded the motion, and then the motion carried unanimously. And then we, he was referred to as the chief in the newsletter, et cetera. So to be absolutely technically correct, um I would, I would uh move that that, I mean, the the minutes are correct, but that we need to to currently change uh his title to interim police chief. And then once he does his final qualification as a full chief, then we can bring it up by motion again for the appointment of a full-fledged police chief, but in that change of title not to affect his pay. Okay, so I would like to make that clarification of a technicality. And then the only other uh correction I have, Kathy, is on number six. Um where it says councilwoman, regarding the resignation or whatever, getting rid, Chief Garcia said Councilwoman Taylor reluctantly, very reluctantly, and then you put I with the I, the capital I, and it should be I as in A Y E. Oh, or yeah, I, yeah, right. So so other than that, those are my only corrections to the uh to the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes, that's corrected. Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
Sixteen discussion, oh, sorry, Jerry, I'll let you read it.
Sixteen discussion and possible action considering the current contract for municipal court judge that expired May of twenty twenty-three. I would like to just uh not renew this with this uh with judge with for uh Weaver on this. And so I make a motion that we um that we uh we not renew the the current contract for municipal court judge that expires May of twenty twenty-three and and provide written notification to uh Ms. Weaver. That's sufficient? Not not going to re- reappoint.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to the long sentence. Motion carries. Uh number seventeen, discussion possible action concerning the appointment of a new municipal court judge.
Uh they and the candidate that we have is name uh of uh Oscar Guerra. And he's has a he has considerable uh time on on uh as a municipal judge at at Santa Rosa. He opted out of Santa Rosa because of political situations there and stuff and not wanting to have egg on his on his face and stuff. In the meantime, he stayed current with all of his qualifications and stuff and everything. And he's just wanting to uh, you know, keep his hand in the in the uh in the ring, in the arena and stuff, and so um
Are you gonna make the motion?
I am.
I'll second it.
I I move I move that we uh appoint uh Oscar Guerra as our new municipal judge at a salary of two hundred dollars a month.
Uh provided that he accepts the offer.
Sure, and and he's ready and and uh and all of the uh and and there won't be any more Zoom uh courts, and it'll all be, it'll all be, it'll be here in person on that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number eighteen, discussion possible action to rescind rescind the previous action taking a taken regarding a take-home unit number zero zero nine police vehicle unit and to sell that vehicle police unit number zero zero nine.
Okay, I make a motion to rescind the previous action of um previous police chief to regarding a take-home unit. And I'm new that we go ahead and sell that same police vehicle.
Zero zero nine.
Zero zero.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a second? We're on a hurry to get it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And last uh item number nineteen, discussion possible action to approve hire an administrative assistant for the city of Palm Valley Water Department at a salary of thirteen dollars an hour.
I make the motion that we uh take action to uh establish the uh or or to fill position of administrative assistant um for the city of Palm Valley Water Department. And uh to uh to advertise whatever um applications for that position.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number twenty is the consent agenda.
I move that we uh accept the consent agenda as 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 um as presented to the council.
Councilman Taylor agrees, I'll second.
Well, Councilwoman Taylor agrees.
I I just I just want to make sure that they don't have anything to add. Chief.
Julie, Chief.
I hired for a new officer today, a new officer, probably about uh about two years experience.
Okay, not a reserve, a full-fledged. Okay, name?
Also added names around the mind.
The mind. Okay.
And uh just added something else to show you that uh I don't want to get too deep into it, but uh I am adding to the agenda to show you what the officer, we want a nightly basis or daily basis. And to give you a little insight as to what their what their calls may be like. Something I've added, but uh new to this, the agenda.
There's a lot of stuff that happens in the city of Palm Valley.
Oh, yeah. We want the dirt, we want to know.
Now, people take our case.
Anything, Julie? No? Yes, maybe? All right, uh all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And the final, I guess.
Yes.
You need like last night, I'd like to make the motion.
I mean, we're where the page. Okay, yeah, we need a voting machine, it's kind of necessary, yes, okay, all right.
Go ahead.
Now, Eric.
I'd like to make a motion to end this meeting, thank you.
Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Carry this, carry over at eight thirty-eight P M.